Comp plan. Yeah, yeah. I had the same. Once I saw Dwight Hume, I'm like, oh. All right, we're gonna start. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Council's study session for today. I was trying to wait for a couple more council members, but I think one of them, I think Councilmember Keneer may not be joining us. And we've been trying to track down Councilmember Wilkerson, but given everyone's here and ready to go and waiting, I think we should move forward. And I'm gonna turn it over to Eric Paulson, who is going to make a presentation about a potential 2021 state legislative agenda. So Eric, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Good morning, my friends. Just a quick reminder that you've been adding items to our state priority agenda these past few months. And so the goal for today is to add three more items and finalize that agenda so that we can present it to legislators at our planned forum with them on December 10. So Hannah Lee, I don't know if you could bring up the suggested language that your legislative team has for you today. And again, just to clarify, so these are our highest priority items. There will be another list of secondary issues that the legislative team recommends that you support, but that they don't expect the city will necessarily take the lead on. These are Spokane-specific issues that the legislative team would like to lead on in the upcoming session, which as a reminder, will be held virtually, including so far, I guess the word is, that even House and Senate floor votes will take place virtually. So that poses a new challenge for advocates like us and for our lobbyists, but we're confident. We have a great team in place. And so I think you're probably familiar with the issues you've already discussed and adopted, but they're on this page if you want to refer to it. The three additions that the team is recommending, first is the Lees Heritage Project. So this is the property located along Highway 195 in the Hangman Valley area. It is a 47-acre parcel that's privately owned. And there is a potential for 96 new homes to be built in that area. A number of conservation interests and food security interests and friends of the bluff above that property have all identified this as an exciting opportunity to transform this property into something that could benefit the public, specifically as a central point for trails that would connect to the Fish Lake Trail and to the Centennial Trail. Urban farming, it's the last and largest piece of land within city limits that's zoned agricultural. And also a great opportunity to do riparian restoration work along the Hangman or the LaTox Creek. So we had a great tour yesterday with the property owner and about 20 people, including several of your staff. And we'll just say there's a lot of excitement and momentum building for this project. I think the city's had a few false starts with it previously, but a great focus here. There is not a specific ask at this time for the legislature, but by putting this on our list of priorities, it enables your lobbyists and your staff to be all in with pursuing funding for this, which the plan will essentially unfold over the next three years. So I know this has been a particular interest to Councilmember Mum and Beggs and Keneer, so I invite any of you, if you want to add anything to that. But otherwise, just think this is a fantastic project that is great to get behind as a city.
Hey Eric?
Yeah?
I ask a question. What, I guess what I'm wondering is, I mean, probably the biggest crisis we face right now is a housing crisis. And so essentially what we're saying is that we're gonna take this offline for housing. But separate from that, though, I guess my concern and my question is, are we talking about asking for funding to do those 195 improvements so that we can actually see increases to our housing stock in that area? I guess, why are we asking for money to keep an area free of housing when the real issue that we're facing right now is a lack of housing?
Hey, I would just-
Freeun's trying to chime in, but I'm glad to-
I'm gonna chime. I'm on now. I can chime in. Yeah, so Councilmember, really, really good point. The money that we're asking for in this is from a very specific funding source at the state. So it wouldn't be money that would be available to the 195 improvements. It's a competitive grant pool of funds that's available to cities and counties all over the state. And so we would just be getting more of that funding that could only be used for this kind of acquisition from the overall. But in terms of the bigger question, which I'm super interested in as well, we have been advocating with WashDOT on that. And there is a, our lobbyists tell us that there's a high likelihood that there will be a major transportation deal at, package this year at the legislature, that we're just learning about that possibility now. So we haven't formulated a legislative agenda for how to go after those dollars for what Spokane needs more. But we, Senator Bilig has asked us to put together a list of, I wouldn't call it shovel-ready, because that's not really the term for this, but to make sure that when that, you know, multi-billion-dollar package comes up, we can compete for the projects that are most important to us. But we just, just, that just became a possibility, so we haven't done that yet. But super great point, well taken.
Okay.
Councilmember, can I respond to that, too?
Yep.
Councilmember Cathcart, this particular area is, has very unique soil. It is not like it, really, any other place in the city where we have agricultural zoning and the highest USDA-grade prime soil inside the city limits. There's a few other areas up in Moran and Five Mile that have it. But that took tens of thousands of years to create. And so cities who have preserved this very highly sensitive agricultural area within city limits have seen a profound benefit to the community, not only for food security, but for many other benefits for the surrounding homeowners and landowners. So I know the tribe is very interested in preserving this as well. There's a very high cost to building housing in this area because of the sensitivity in the riparian areas, which is probably why it hasn't been developed, if you think about it, in the last 25 years. It's a challenging site. So I think this is a great win-win. I know several staff members have been involved in it. And I think that the Southern District would find investment in this and preservation could only benefit the housing around it. So it is a very unique situation.
Really quickly ask, is this site inside the urban growth boundary currently or not?
It's in the city limits.
But within the UGA, inside the city?
All, every piece of land inside our municipality is actually in the UGA.
Thought there was a couple spots that weren't. But regardless, okay. No, thank you.
Thank you all. Any other comments on that or questions? Seeing none. The next item is something the legislative team had been pursuing pretty aggressively up until the recent Supreme Court decision on Initiative 976. And I think we'd like to recommend they keep it on the list of tools or options that the city could deploy in the event that it seeks property tax levy for transportation infrastructure improvements, with the idea being that property taxes are less regressive than under other funding sources. And so while I don't think, I'll let the council members weigh in on this, I don't think there's any imminent plan for any property tax increases, like many of the housing agenda items that we've had on our, in previous years. This would just give us another tool in the toolbox in the event that it's needed at some point down the road. Anybody want to add anything to that from the legislative team that's on the line?
Yeah, I would, I would just say that, as you said, it's a tool. Right now, there's some state laws that constrain cities being able to go to their own voters and ask them for investments. My view on asking for levy lifts is you put together a great product and then the voters get to decide whether to use it, implement it or not, whether they want to buy it. And I think we've seen over the years that although we have a great arterial streets bond levy in place, it falls far short on residential streets and sidewalks and alleys and unpaved streets and bicycle infrastructure and all those different things. And so if this was particularly critical when 976 was in place and we lost our TBD monies, so it's a little less critical. But given the legislature is gonna be looking at this issue, we thought we would just continue to try and influence them to provide more tools to all cities, but based on, only on voter approval. Councilmember Cathcart.
So would the, would it, I guess I'm trying to understand what we're asking. Are we asking that we can raise it, raise property taxes 1% for those dollars to go into the general fund, but we would be allowed to raise it an additional amount specifically for transportation projects? Or would this just allow, for any reason, you could expand the increase in property taxes?
This is limited to just transportation. So right now, you know, there's a twofold restriction on going to the voters. There's a certain number, I forget what the actual number is, but if you, you can't go above, if you're underneath that number of all the levies that you've gone to your voters for, it's a 50% approval threshold. If you're over that number, it's a 60%, and it only lasts one year. So it basically says, as a practical matter, you would never do that. So this would say, for transportation project levies only within cities, that wouldn't count against that cap. So it would make it easier to do transportation levies approved by the voters, but just limited to transportation.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and then the last item is really more of a process issue. We really, under the rules and the procedures adopted by the legislative team, our lobbyists don't really have a green light to work on issues until there's been a vote before the full council. And so this is a way to help them and to help our legislative team be nimble when there are requests made for capital projects, for support of community projects. We're in the process of developing a list of items, but we found during the last legislative session that, you know, going through an official council process to brief council members, taking a vote before the full council when we wanted to say, you know, I think Councilmember Mum, your community, our project's a great example. We want to get a message to the legislature that we're looking for, you know, very small amount of money for an important community project. And I think we had about three to four days to put that all together. So this would just enable the legislative team to make, make those recommendations without having to go through a lengthy, laborious council process. But I think there's a lot of trust in the legislative team in making those decisions, so this is recognition of that. Did I see your hand was up, Councilmember Mum?
That was me just clapping, because I think this is a good solution, because we do have these things that just pop up. And you have to seize the opportunity. And we've done a pretty good job of doing that, because we have a great team here in Spokane with you, Eric, and of course Brian McClatchy also, and the rest of the folks who are plugged in on the legislative team. And, you know, all council's been plugged in at some level. And then also our lobbyists over in Olympia. But if we have this, I think that as long as we're committed to communicate with the council as quickly as possible to get feedback on these, I think this is a good way to go. But sometimes you have to move pretty fast. And so I think this is an improvement in the process.
Thanks, Councilmember Cathcart. See your hands up. Sorry to take over your duties there, Council President.
It's all right.
Just wondering, would this then, would our lobbyists be representing these issues as coming from the council? Or would they be representing them as coming from the legislative team of the council?
Well, I'll-
I'll jump in. I'll jump in. Really, it's actually there, it would be on behalf of the city, so it's even a little more broadly. So that, because the, under the current ordinances in place, the city council is the lead on legislative affairs. So that's really what we're asking, is that they could sign in on behalf of the city of Spokane and say they're in favor of something with this process. So that's the process we're trying to figure out, how to, how to fast-track that so we don't lose out on something and yet honor the process that we have.
Could we at least, and I understand the need to be flexible and nimble and move quick. Legislative decisions happen really fast. But could we at least sort of set it up in such a way that the council would at some point in the very near future have some role of buying into whatever that decision was?
We, we totally can. I mean, I'm just thinking out loud, but it's not a matter of that we can't talk to council members. The hard part was organizing a whole official formal vote on it. So in terms of a communication out, that when something comes up, we could communicate it out to all council members and staff and the administration and say, hey, this opportunity's here. We're thinking of pursuing it. You know, let us know your feedback. So that if anyone has some concerns that they might uniquely know or just they have a different opinion, we would know that. And if, you know, there was enough of that built up, that would probably give us pause. So I think we can do the communication feedback nimbly as well. It was just the formal vote piece that was slowing us down.
Okay.
And often in one of our districts, it's a project in one of our districts, so, you know, we will, you know, share that as it comes through, because of course you want to know about it, you know, if it's a grant that's potentially coming to your neighborhood or something you could help us with.
Yeah, and just some personal reassurance. I've found that over the past couple of years, there has not been a controversial request made for capital transportation dollars. I think the council members are really great about being transparent and not taking on controversial projects for, you know, for no other reason than good council relations with their colleagues and public perception. So I just will commit to you, Councilmember Cathcart, to keep you apprised of recommendations that are coming from the legislative team and seek your input early and often. And I'll submit that to all the other council members. This is just kind of an exciting bucket of funding that we, you know, get to pursue and sometimes others have mentioned in very, very short order. So appreciate some wiggle room to the work and be successful. And that's all I have for today.
I just wanted to note one thing that I think we have some unique strengths, as maybe not everyone knows, but Eric was in the legislature and Councilmembers Cathcart and Burke both worked for legislators in Olympia. And so we have some pretty good insight from across the political spectrum of what's going on and how to get things done. So we lean on that and appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, let's move to comprehensive plan annual amendments. I see, and that's gonna be, Kevin Freebot's gonna lead that. I see some people on the line who's not usually at our study session. I know they're very interested. I'm assuming they've got some proposed amendments on track. But Kevin, I'll hand off the talking stick to you. You can take it away.
Thank you, Council President. Council members, it's good to see you all again. Haven't been here in a while. I appreciate the time today. I know you're super busy, but we do have, we do have this year's suite of comprehensive plan amendment applications ready to come forward to you now. And so I'd like to spend today just quickly going over the program itself and those applications so that you have a chance to ask any questions. You haven't seen these since spring, and so I wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to chat and bring you up to speed. So feel free to ask any questions. I'll just kind of try to barrel through these. I know we don't have a lot of time and we're real compressed for time here, so. Just real quick, as we do every year, we've set up a project website. That is available on our project site. All of the information is there. The staff reports are there. The Plan Commission findings are going up today. So any pertinent information is gonna be available on that site if you want to look through it. As you probably recall, we do this once a year typically. We've, every once in a while, we won't if there's a comp plan, like a major update or something, but this year is a regular year. So we take applications every year in September and October. We are doing that now for next year. And all of these applications were submitted then. There are some city-sponsored proposals this year. There's three of them. They were received, you know, between December and January. That's pretty typical. And so in spring, the threshold committee is formed by the city council, which is a, three city council members, three Plan Commission members. They go over every application and make a recommendation as to which ones should be included in the docket for the year. Then city council met in spring to set the docket for this year. You accepted all nine applications that we received, and that was Council Resolution 0014. So following that, we go through the whole process for these. They've had a 14-day agency and department comment, 60-day public comment period. We've taken them to the Plan Commission for workshops. And ultimately, the Plan Commission held hearings in September to consider all of these applications. So today, I'll go through all of them in summary, and then I'll talk about what Plan Commission's findings were. So you will get all of these materials in OnBase. I apologize for all the reading. This is a big, this is a big lift. But these are, you know, these are major, or these are changes to our comprehensive plan, so they are by nature comprehensive. You will get the Plan Commission findings and conclusions, which includes their recommendations, a staff report from me, which includes comments received, the relative comprehensive plan policies, and all of the application materials. And then in some cases, we've received comments after Plan Commission closed their public record, and so those are included separately. They just, they came in later, that's all. And then if there's additional materials, I've included those as well. So there's everything there for you to review. Of course, staff is always available for questions. We would like to, obviously, we're bringing it to you today to, for a study session, we would like to bring it to you for a final reading of all the ordinances on November 23, if that's fine. We can, we can work that out later, but that's kind of the schedule that we were hoping to get. We have to, we have to finish these within the year or it could impact our ability to make amendments next year. And so typically, these are done within the calendar year. And then also, even though these are considered as a group, they're considered as a program, there is a separate ordinance for each application that we receive. Before I go on to the applications themselves, are there any questions on the process? You guys have seen this before. I think you probably tired of hearing it from me. I just wanted to hit it really quick.
Any question? Well, many of us have seen it before. But we have new people.
Sorry, Council President, I couldn't hear you. You're on mute.
I said, many of us have seen it before, but we do have new people, so it's always worth going over.
True.
You did it very succinctly, so continue on.
I've gotten, I've gotten good at short, so we'll try to cover all the big points. Okay, so this year, we had six proposed amendments to the land use plan map. These are when people want to change the land use and zoning of a property or properties in the city. You'll see on the map here, there are these red pins that you see. They, oop, my apologies. They are, there are two in District 1, and the rest are all in District 2. These are these red marks here, and I'll go over those individually. These are all from private individuals. They are from the public. Then we have some city-sponsored ones that we'll go through. One is some amendments to the bike master plan, to the bike map that's in the comprehensive plan, and some minor text changes to the plan. There's some discussion, there's a new text for Chapter 4 on railroad crossing safety. And then we have our usual, you know, cleanup and update of the arterial map that's in the comp plan as well. So first, we'll go through the private ones. And then my colleagues, Colin Quinnhurst is here from my office for the bikes, and Inga Notes here for the other two. So the first private application is 499. This is the Liberty Avenue application. You'll notice it's in the northeast of the city. It concerns three properties, or three parcels here, just off of Market Street on Liberty Avenue. And the same owner owns the whole southern half of this block, but they're seeking to amend the land use and zoning of these three parcels. It's actually two parcels and a part of one behind the restaurant use that they've already got. They've already got a general commercial use there. They want to change the ones behind it. It's about .6 acres. It's in the Bemis neighborhood. Just kind of zooming out, you can see Euclid to the south here. Euclid is the major east-west street that's closest, of course, Market. And then this railroad you see, that's the North Spokane corridor, the future North Spokane corridor. And so it kind of gives you an idea where we're at. They are seeking to amend the land use from residential 4 to 10. That's our least dense residential use. And they want to make the entire block, including all the property they own on it, general commercial. And so that would change from residential 4 to 10 to general commercial on the land use map. And then, of course, we also change the zoning at the same time. The zoning would change from RSF, or residential, single-family, and it would change to general commercial 70, which is general commercial 70-foot height limit. We received a minor comment from the Spokane Tribe for a future survey if they're gonna develop, but no other agency or department concerns. We got a series of public comments in the form of a comment card from residents nearby that said, you know, we oppose this proposal, but it didn't say why. So we just got a staff card. You've got those in your, in the staff report. And then Plan Commission considered this proposal, and they recommend that you approve it. Are there any questions on 499 before I go into the next? Okay, not seeing any. The next application is 501. This is- Okay, not seeing any. The next application is 501. This is Nevada Decatur. This one is located in Nevada Heights. The property owner here, they own both the red property that you see, which is the subject of the proposal, and the properties marked in the white hash marks here. That's just the same owner. That's how we indicate that it's an adjacency of the same ownership. The properties right now, there's two parcels. They each contain a rental home, a single-family rental home, and there is a city alleyway between the subject properties and their adjacent ownership. So where we're at is we're right southeast of Nevada and Francis, which is real close to the neighborhood boundary. So they did talk to Shiloh Hills as well as Nevada Heights. And then the request by the applicant is to amend the land use from the current land use of residential four to 10, and to bring it into the general commercial area so that it matches their adjacent property to the north. You'll notice here that Francis itself has general commercial, but everything else around it to the south is residential four to 10. So they would be, they would want to bring that into the general commercial. The zoning, their adjacent property is CB55. They want to make this property CB55, community business, 55-foot height limit. You may recall, community business and general commercial, they're both appropriate in the general commercial land use, but community business is slightly less building density. It's less floor area ratio, and I think it's 15 feet less height. So it's just less intense commercial development. Other than that, it's very similar. We did receive a request from the Shiloh Hills Chair for some alleyway and access issues. Those would, of course, be worked out on development stage, not at this stage. The Spokane Tribe didn't have any concerns. Whitman Chair wrote a letter of support. And then as far as public comments go, there is an additional letter in the packet for you that came in after the Plan Commission hearing from the property owner. So that'll be in your packet. Plan Commission looked at this proposal and recommends that you deny it because they feel it does not, it is not consistent with LU 1.8, which is our policy in the comp plan on where to establish general commercial land uses. So you can see that in the findings if you want to see what they, their attitude on that. Council Member Cathcart? Oh, sorry, Council President. I think you're supposed to call those.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Kevin. I guess I would just say, I didn't quite understand the denial. I think this would be a big-time improvement on that site. In fact, that building that they're trying to redevelop and kind of push back from the street edge there has been hit multiple times by trucks. It's not safe, and this would be a significant improvement. And they, and my understanding is, I've spoken to an agent of the developer that would actually relocate those tenants, so there would not be any displacement. They would relocate those tenants into something equal or better. And so I think this would be a much significant improvement to that corner there, and perhaps even lead to additional developments in that other zone just adjacent to it that I think another large property owner currently holds. So anyway, I think this would be really good improvement.
Yes. Speaking to the Plan Commission findings, their comments on it were along the lines of it's not consistent with the language of LU 1.8, which calls for general commercial in the vicinity of centers and corridors. And this is not in a center and corridor. And I think that was what their comments hinged on.
Kevin, I just, I wanted to say that during this section, you should feel free to call on people. So just keep doing that.
It's an old habit. I mediate a lot of these meetings, and I apologize, Council President. Okay, great. Any other questions on 501 before we move on? Nope, terrific. Okay, so 502, the 29th and Ray. This one's a little special. I'll explain why here in just a second. We are talking about the, very close to the intersection of 29th and Ray on the South Hill in the Lincoln Heights neighborhood. You can see here that there are two areas highlighted. The one on the east, this is two properties that used to contain a house. You can see it in this picture. It has since been demolished, separate from this application. They got a permit. It was demolished. This is now vacant land. It was just our aerial photos haven't caught up yet. So these two properties were requested, were included in the application by the private applicant themselves. During the threshold process, City Council added two additional properties. It's this entire parking lot and a small strip of the property to the north, which somehow got left out of the zoning. It's the same effect. It would be doing the same process, but it's just adding properties that have a similar situation. And I'll show you that on the land use map here in a second. But what we have is, it's four, it's four properties total, four parcels total. It's about .4 acres total. This is the private applicant side. This is the city's proposal side. Generally, the parking lot is still there. The home to the north at this little strip of backyard is still there. Those folks don't have any plans to amend or to develop or change their property. That's just, it was included for good reason. I'll show you here in a second. There is an alley, just real quick, there is an alley north of the private application here. It's completely unimproved. There is no, you couldn't drive it if you wanted. The grade change is too significant, but it's important to note that there is a right-of-way there for the city. Zooming out a little bit very quickly here, you can see how as you move west from Ray, these buildings are larger. There's a lot of apartments. There's some offices here. That's the beginning of the denser land uses around the Lincoln Heights center. So there is a center, and it is just to the west here. The proposal is to take the current land use from residential four to 10 and to fold it into the office land use. The private application would extend office across Ray and into this area. The city's part of the application is really to fix this hole in the office for better, or lack of a better term, this hole in the office land use. And so it would fold this entire block into those denser center uses. This would extend it. The zoning, of course, goes from residential single family to office or Office 35, which is a 35-foot height limit. We're not talking high rises. We're talking two stories max. But it would, obviously, this would change as well as the land use. We didn't get any comments, any concerns from the Spokane Tribe or any other agencies. The neighborhood chair wrote a letter in opposition. And then we also received multiple public comments in opposition. You're going to have two sets. There's the set in the staff report from the Plan, from before Plan Commission hearing. There's some additional ones as well. There was also a letter from the neighborhood. They voted in opposition of this. Plan Commission's recommendation's a little odd because we have an expansion. It's split on this one. And just to explain that quickly, as soon as I can get my mouse to respond, there we go. Plan Commission recommended that City Council approve the change for the city-sponsored part of this application. They recommended denial for the private application side of this, specifically because it didn't comply with the language, they didn't feel it complied with the language in LU 1.5, which is our policy that applies to where office uses are placed in a city. So I encourage you to read that and kind of, if you have questions, I can always answer those, too. So Plan Commission's recommendation was split. We have a lot of public comment on this one. Are there any questions before we move on?
I have a-
Oh, Council President? Can't hear you.
I have a question. I'm just wondering what the rationale for the private applicant, it seems like everything east of Ray is single-family residential. What was the, other than it's a big, open lot on a major intersection, is there, did they have some compelling, I shouldn't say, what was their argument of why they thought we should encroach into that single-family residential?
Mr. Hume is here. He is the agent for the applicant. If it's all right, I'd like to pass to him to answer that question.
Sure.
Mr. Hume? You're muted, sir. There it goes.
Okay. Can you repeat that question, Council President?
Sure. Yeah, I just wondered, it seems like everything east of Ray is single-family residential, and we're, the request is to change that, which, and I'm just wondering what is the, what's the argument using the comprehensive plan language to suggest that change?
Okay, we would, we would say that it was the trend. You've got two out of the four quadrants of that intersection, 29th and Ray, are already office. Historically, we've tried to get this corner done. The market forces have wanted this to be an office site. We have several different offers to, from purchasers to buy this site. And I think that has a lot of relevance as to the reasonableness of what this proposal is. It's a very limited site in terms of accessibility, and so it would just be a very low-intensity point destination type office for a doctor or somebody like that. We don't see that as, especially when you pay attention to the non-residential land use between 29th and 7th on the east side of Ray. There are numerous other examples, churches, daycare, various things that are evidence that this does not penetrate or adversely affect the usually residential areas. So we felt comfortable proposing this, especially with the demand from the public, or from the market wanting to have it for an office use. That's our rationale. We feel that in numerous other decisions that I've been involved in for office, the idea of trend is enough to warrant it. Last year's batch over on Sherman and, what is it, Hartson, we did just that. And this is a similar thing, in my opinion. Thanks.
All right. Thanks for sharing that.
Are there any other questions before we move on? Great. Again, I apologize. We have to roll through these pretty quickly. I'm trying not to take too much time here. Next application, 503. This is further south on the southern, near the southern border of the city, known as the 53rd Avenue application. We're looking at about 10, 10.3, 10 and a half acres in the South Gate neighborhood. Again, this one is just like the last one. It's a split between the private applicant, which was this southern kind of, excuse the term, workshop-shaped parcel here. City Council added the parcel to the north. It has the same situation from a zoning and land use perspective. So the private applicant was for the south. The radio station to the north, we have since been in contact with the property owner and the operator. They have no intention of developing it. This is more about cleaning up an issue with zoning and land use. They also have no objection to it. They're not, they don't have a concern with the proposed change. So this is in the South Gate neighborhood. You'll see that on three sides, it's surrounded by multifamily. It is currently, it contains one rural style, rural-type residence, some outbuildings, and of course, the property to the north is a radio station and two radio towers. Looking out a little wider, this is the target. This is the South Gate target that you see. That is a designated center in our comprehensive plan. And then to the south, not at 53rd, but, or actually, starting at 53rd, sorry, right here is another district center. So this property, these two properties are located adjacent to or very close to two separate district centers in our comprehensive plan. The proposal is to take them from residential four to 10, to up their density to residential 15 to 30. You can see here, they're currently surrounded by higher density. This would bring them into that higher-density residential use, with a commensurate zoning change from RSF, or residential single family, to residential multifamily. In other words, this is filling in the cookie. We've got a bite in the cookie. This would fill it in. We did not receive any agency or department comments of concern on this application. We did get some public comment cards from the neighborhood, from a neighborhood council meeting. And also, there's been a couple letters that have come in later. Those will be in your packets as well, all in opposition. Plan Commission looked at this, looked at policy LU, sorry, LU 1.4, which talks about higher-density residential uses and where they should go. And they felt that this was appropriate, and they recommend approval of this application. Is there any questions on 503? Okay. 504, we're almost there. I'm getting through them. 504 is on 8th Avenue. This one is in the West Hills neighborhood, and we are talking just west of the intersection of Government Way and Sunset Boulevard. You may recall in the comprehensive plan, that is a mini-center, so it's not a full-blown neighborhood or district center. It's a smaller concept, but it's similar. So we're looking at 2.2 acres on two parcels. They're both on 8th Avenue, which is actually right here. This dirt road, that is actually city street, and so is this to the east. So that's something to keep in mind. The property does not include this road right-of-way. It just hasn't been paved. So we are talking about these 2.2 acres here. There are three multifamily dwellings on the site, and they're related to the, it used to be a motel or a hotel on Sunset. It's now a residential care center. These are all related. They're all of the same owner. And the application is concerning everything here, to change this land use and zoning for the northern part, essentially widening out a little bit here. You can see the railroad, this is actually above the property. It's much, it's significantly higher up. There's a large bluff before you get to the rest of the neighborhood to the west. So just to kind of give you an idea. And then this is, this is Lyndecky and Government Way. This is the center of the mini-center. So the land use plan, it currently calls for residential four to 10. The proposal would be to bring that up to 15 to 30, to a multifamily use. The zoning, of course, would also change from residential single family to residential multifamily. Also, you can see here on the land use plan map, this dark purple color, that's the mini-center. So you can see this is right adjacent to it. We did receive, you know, the Spokane Tribe would like to see a site survey. That's later on in development. We got a single comment regarding frontage and drainage concerns for the site, which of course would also be considered during development. And then an additional comment letter in support from Empire Health. Plan Commission looked at this. They felt it supports the mini-center, that the policy calls for greater housing density around it. Therefore, they recommend that you approve this proposal. Council Member Mom?
Hi there. My recollection is this also is a designated center that just has not had a plan done for it, beside it being next to a mini-center. Did the Plan Commission discuss that at all?
It doesn't have a actual, like, on the land use plan map where we have those circles, it doesn't have a circle on it. What it was is it didn't get to that level of being a center. That's why it's a mini-center. What we have talked about a lot in the past, and Plan Commission talked about this, too, was the need for maybe some coordinated planning around this mini-center because it is, you know, it has all this potential, but it's not doing anything right now. If you look at the aerial photograph, you can see here there's a lot of vacant land. We have a couple of uses here that are vacant or sitting derelict. It has all this great potential, but it hasn't been tapped yet. So Plan Commission talked about that. They talked about the fact that the mini-center is there, and that they wanted to support the idea of that mini-center developing the way that the comp plan described it.
So when we passed the first comp plan in 2001, we really talked about the potential here, and we gave two center designations. We gave one here, and we also gave one over by SFCC for the West Hills neighborhood. And when West Hills was getting ready to plan, they evaluated both of these and ended up choosing SFCC because it was developing more rapidly. So this is always intended to have more scrutiny, and they just never got a plan.
My recollection of that effort's the same, is West Hills has talked many times about, oh, we're really interested in this area, too. So, good point, yeah. Council Member Stratton?
Just one more time. What is on the parcel now? Did you say there's a senior living facility?
No, there's three multifamily homes.
Okay.
Part of the treatment, I think they're related to the treatment facility to the south. It's the old motel. So they're occupied. They're clearly occupied when I went there. But there used to be a trailer park on this property years ago, and it's been removed. There's no other, there's no other facilities or improvements. There's some cars parked there for the folks that live in the multifamily. There's a couple of utility pedestals, but there's nothing else.
So will those multifamily that are there, will they stay there, or do those have to be relocated?
I don't, I don't know if, because, you know, the nature of a comp plan amendment, we can't, we don't get into the nitty-gritty of the development. I'm not sure. I'm not sure. Mr. Hume is the agent for this application as well.
I'm just wondering, because the one, previous one, the owner talked about rehousing people. So I'm just wondering if that's the same for this, if there are people living there that have to be removed, if they're going to get help, rehousing, or there's a plan for that.
If I could ask Mr. Hume, do you know?
Real quickly, the development of the proposed site would take place first, and then the removal of the hotel and new housing there. So there would be no displacement.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Dwyane.
Kevin?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. This seems like we had a very similar application previously that was withdrawn, so I'm wondering if you can confirm that. And then, secondly, I'm interested in what the height changes are going to be, and how that might reflect or impact the view corridors of the people above them.
Okay. As far as the previous applications, I believe it's actually come forward twice. I'm not sure it got through the docketting twice. But those previous times were previous owner, this is a new owner. And previously, they were withdrawn because of some issues with securing the ownership and confirming who owned it and who had rights to it. And they were, they were not rejected from the docket. They were withdrawn by the applicant. So that's really important, because we do have standards that say if they were rejected, they have to wait to come back, they have to change their, this isn't that case. In this case, the applicant was like, I have to stop and I'll come back. And in this case, they have since sold the property, the new applicant has come forward. Or the new owner, I'm sorry.
And then what about the elevation?
And then as far as the view shed?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the elevation difference between this property and the properties above is significant. It's on the order of more than 40, 50 feet. And then between them, you have this railroad viaduct. You cannot see these homes from this property. And I did not drive up on D Street or take pictures, but, I mean, it is a significant grade difference that you could build three, four stories probably on this property and not affect the views of those folks up there.
So what is the restriction? Because I just remember the last time it was on our docket, the neighborhood seemed to be concerned about the height. So what's the height change from what it currently is to what it would be if approved?
I don't remember off the top of my head what the height standard is for RMF. Tyrone Black's on here. Tyrone, do you remember?
It is also, it is 35 feet. If you can go to what it is existing, Kevin, you have the zoning.
I don't have the map open, no. Oh, the zoning. Sorry.
Yeah. So it'll be the same height that it is now.
Okay.
Which is 35 feet height limit.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Tyrone. I've got nine windows open. It's a little like flying an airplane, I gotta find what I'm looking for. But, great questions, Council President. Any other questions? Oh, I never got through that, I'm sorry. So, Plan Commission did, oh, I did say, Plan Commission did recommend approval of this one, so. All right. Not seeing any other questions, moving on. This is our last land use plan map amendment, this is 505. It's 10th Avenue in the Cliff Cannon neighborhood. It represents a single parcel of about 0.16 acres. This is on 10th Avenue, so this is in close proximity to, here on the northeast, you can see that's Huckleberries, the Ace Hardware, there's a new multifamily development, and the last year, we had a little, or two years ago, we had a little comp plan amendment that cleaned up some of the zoning and land use up here by Huckleberries. So this is close to that. This is not a center. Huckleberries is a neighborhood retail, I'll show you in a second, so just keep that in mind. This entire area is pretty much a residential neighborhood. It is, the site currently contains a single structure. It's clearly a home, a historic home that has been added to. So there's, it has multiple styles, it's a couple different, you can see it fills up most of the parcel. The applicant is requesting to take it from its current land use, which is residential four to 10, to bring it into the residential 15 to 30, that multifamily kind of density. So here on this map, you can see that neighborhood retail around Huckleberries, you can see to the northwest, same intersection northwest, that's where that residential 15 to 30 kind of starts for that part of the South Hill. Essentially, what's happened here is that the home was historically used as a, like a senior care home, but it sat vacant for long enough that they lost their ability to be a legal non-conforming use. So now, because it sat vacant, the owner now has to, is limited in the number of beds that he can, of non-related persons he can have living there, because it's zoned single-family. If it's zoned multifamily, that number goes up, and he's able to fully occupy the facility and use it for its intended purpose, which is senior care. So bringing it into 15 to 30, of course, would also change the zoning from residential single-family to residential multifamily. And you can kind of see that change here, we're only talking about one property, but, you know, this is that established neighborhood. The Spokane Tribe wasn't too concerned about the site, we didn't get any other agency comments. We did get quite a few comments in opposition, one or two comments in support of this proposal. You'll have those in your packet, that includes a petition. And then Plan Commission looked at this specifically as it relates to LU 1.4, which is that higher-density residential uses. And they felt that this did not meet that, did not comply with the comprehensive plan at the intent of LU 1.4, and they recommend that you deny this application. Are there any questions on 505 before moving forward? Great. So now we move on into the city-sponsored applications. We've got one here that Colin Quinnhurst is joining us. Colin is shepherding this one through the process as our bike peg coordinator. So Colin, I'm going to go ahead and hand it off to you, and I'll click slides for you, sir.
Awesome. Thank you, Kevin, and good morning. As Kevin mentioned, I'm here to provide information about proposed updates to the city's bicycle network. We have about a dozen proposed updates recommending changes to future bicycle facility types based on feedback, mostly from neighborhood councils, and also looking at high-activity locations and destinations. Respond to land use and development changes, as well as road space and capacity, among other considerations. So you can go to the next slide. And so, most of the changes are to the bicycle network map, so future facility types, and recommending about a dozen adjustments to those. We also have a couple text amendments, pretty minor, but that relate to protected bike lanes. So, next slide, we have about four, we have four changes to bike lanes, which are recommending upgrading these street segments from shared lanes to bike lanes, including an adjustment to Boone Avenue from the North Bank area up to the north part of the Gonzaga campus, linking to the new bike lanes on Sharp Avenue. On Altamont Street, it would connect Fifth Avenue under the freeway over to Sprague Avenue and Main Avenue. And then Flint Road at the airport would extend the bike lanes to provide a full connection through the airport loop to the airport. And then on Cali Street, connecting through the medical district by St. Luke's. Next slide. In terms of neighborhood greenways, which are low-volume, low-speed neighborhood streets that are already good streets for walking and biking, but with additional improvements such as safety improvements at arterial crossings, wayfinding treatments, and some speed management and volume treatments. We have three proposals. One is for a new neighborhood greenway on an existing bike-friendly route on 10th and 11th Ave, connecting the Ben Bird Trail at Altamont Circle through the Perry District, through Grant Park, and up to 14th and Grand, where it would link with other planned neighborhood greenways. One is for Cook Street, and this came through walkability audits by the Northeast Community Center and Library and the Shaw Middle School campus. And another is for an adjustment shifting 17th Avenue Greenway up to 18th, to take advantage of a hawk signal there at Grand by Manitow Park, and also to connect recent improvements at Bernard, which added an RFB there by Cataldo School, and to connect with other neighborhood destinations such as Rockwood Market and Bakery.
Hey, Colin.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So, we had, Northeast Spokane was thinking of doing one on, I believe, Empire. Is that still in the works at all? Because before I got on the council, I, like, asked for funding to do a crosswalk on Nevada to help continue that greenway. And so I'm just wondering where that is.
Right. So on, go to the next slide. On Garland, Empire, we are proposing a shared-use path connecting the Children of the Sun Trail to the Northeast Community Center and Library. There are other neighborhood greenways in the bike master plan in that area, such as on Everett and Longfellow.
Everett was the one I was thinking of, I'm sorry, Empire, but I was thinking Everett, yeah.
Yeah, Everett's still in the plan, yeah. So that is already in the plan.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. We have some proposed updates to the shared-use path locations, so upgrading to shared-use paths on Strong Road and Garland. And these are mostly to take advantage of recent or upcoming upgrades to pathway network, such as the Children of the Sun Trail, so as I mentioned, a new path on Garland Avenue, linking the Northeast Community Center to Children of the Sun Trail, and also to connect with Upriver Park by Vista, as that gets changed, and also to connect the south end, the far-south end of the Ben Bird Trail, to the Palouse Highway Path that's currently existing by Regal at the South Complex. And so, the next slide, we're proposing to add one new bike-friendly route, which is just a great street that's, you know, as is, a good street to walk and bike on, but it just calls it out in the bike master plan, and it kind of sets it up for eventual consideration as a neighborhood greenway. And that's adding Pittsburgh through the Bemis and Whitman neighborhoods, and by Rogers High School, has a unique advantage of being a low-volume, low-speed neighborhood street that has a traffic signal to cross Wellesley, so we definitely want to take advantage of that.
Hey, Colin?
Yeah.
On that, I've really been perplexed as to how, what sort of infrastructure is going to be added to make it safe to cross Francis at, right there on Pittsburgh?
Right, yeah, and this, a bike-friendly route doesn't entail that. Right now, we're just identifying this as a good street, but through additional public process, working with neighborhood councils, we could look at in a future amendment, upgrading this to a neighborhood greenway, which would entail crossing improvements at Francis and those types of treatments.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And so on the next slide, we do have a text amendment, which addresses protected bike lanes in the plan, and how they apply to the future bikeway network, and says that, you know, future bike lanes may be considered for protected bike lane designs following additional assessment and review. And that further network-level planning is required to identify a system of these types of bike lanes. There's one other text amendment on the next slide, which is to remove outdated map references, which can be confusing. So, as the bike master plan is an appendix to the comprehensive plan, these references are outdated, and we're removing those and updating them to map TR-5.
Colin, one more question if I can. Yeah. Are there more details as to specifically when you would have a protected bike lane versus a strip of paint?
Yeah, there is some discussion of that in the existing text about, you know, when protection would be desired. And in this, oh, go ahead.
Well, I was just guessing, is it based on something strategic, or is it more just funding?
It's based on traffic volumes and speeds primarily. And so, in the street design standards update, there's a graph from the Federal Highway Administration, which provides a matrix for street volumes and speeds, you know, above 30 miles per hour and above, I think it's like 5,000 or 7,000 vehicles per day, where it calls out separation is, would be the recommended treatment. And so, between this and the street design standards, there are some pretty explicit criteria for when you'd want protection.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And so we did, on the next slide, we went through a public process, several committees on the Bicycle Advisory Board, the PET Committee of the Community Assembly, and we had a public open house in July for people to write comments. And we received a lot of comments, mostly supportive, a number with ideas for adjustments, and a number with ideas for future amendments. And the Plan Commission recommended to approve these changes.
Thanks, Colin.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any last questions before we go on to the next?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to say I'm really excited about all those updates, and so glad we have you, Colin, to lead us through that process.
Thanks for having me. Happy to be here.
Yeah, Colin's doing a great job, and this project alone kind of garnered a lot of public interest and funneled a lot of new ideas in, so that was great. Well done, Colin, thanks.
Thanks.
Next, we're going to move on to the next application, which is 042, which is the arterial map amendments. Inga, do you want to run your presentation, or do you want me to run it for you?
Do you have the one that I sent to Hannah Lee?
I do.
Okay, yeah, if you want to run it, go ahead.
There you go.
Okay. So, go ahead, next to me. So this is just showing the existing map TR-12, and what we have in this application is a few updates, just some things that kind of slipped through the cracks when we did the full revision of it a couple of years ago, and just a couple other things that have changed since then. So, error correction, just checking consistency with the SMC arterial map, which, I'll explain that again, because I know it always gets confusing. The TR-12 map in the comp plan is intended to be kind of our long-range plan for the arterial streets, and then the one that's in the municipal code is intended to represent what's on the ground right now. But for most part, they should match. We also had the vacation of Upriver that was done for a Vista, so we want to take that off the arterial map. We have a couple of streets that have been constructed and now need to be reflected as existing arterials instead of proposed. And then we had a couple of requests to reclassify streets from the Northeast PDA, and then from the East Spring Business Association. So, this is one of them, Barnes Road, it's just changing it from a proposed to an existing Starting in the upper right on this one, we have the Rowan Avenue and Myrtle Street, which were requests from the Northeast PDA. They would like to have Rowan, which is the east-west, classified as an urban major collector, which, looking at the volumes and the land uses, it seems to have enough traffic to warrant that. And then Myrtle Street, we were going to classify as a proposed urban major collector, just because it's not improved right now, but with the intent that it would eventually be paved all the way through and get upgraded. Upriver Drive, we are just doing an error correction there. We had it, I think, either misclassified as being inside or outside the city limits, one or the other, it was, it's shown incorrectly on the map. And then, Upriver Drive by a Vista, we are just removing that one, turning it back into a local street, and then, with the understanding that it's going to be closed once a Vista starts her parks construction. And then Rudder Avenue over by Selts Field is also just one where we had a little miscommunication on where the city limit was and what part is actually ours versus the Valley's. So, in the downtown area, we've got the Post Street Bridge, which I believe right now is being shown as a minor arterial on our existing map, but it really should be a collector to match with what's on the federal map. We're adding Martin Luther King as an existing arterial, since it was shown as proposed on the map before. Ninth Avenue directly below that was accidentally left off the map before, so we're putting it back on there. Thurston Avenue down to the south was one that, it was on the map before as an urban major collector, but it doesn't operate that way, and it has a funny jog in the streets, and so we're recommending that it just be a local from now on. And then, Main Avenue and Altamont Street, those were requests from the East Spring Business Association, and we think those are warranted based on the increased traffic in the area. Out in the West Plains, Campus Road, which is the north-south yellow line right there, has been constructed and is open to traffic, so we need to reflect that change. Grove Road over on the right was accidentally left off, just because it's a short little piece before it goes into the county. Granite Avenue, this road has been out there for quite a while, but we're just updating it to show it as a minor arterial, because we are working with developers and also just with everybody on the West Plains, really, the PDA, the Aerie Heights, the state, to build a network of frontage re- build a network of frontage roads along US 2. And so we just want to reflect that that's kind of the first piece of the south side frontage road. And then on the lower left corner, Thorpe Road is just another one where it's in the city, not in the county like we thought, so just correcting that on the map. Okay, next one. And at the same time, you'll notice that there is some language that is on the draft ordinance that says that we are rolling a few of these into the SMC map as well, so that I don't have to come back to you as part of a separate process to update that. So there's only three little changes that are going on to the SMC map. So, and remember, this is the one that reflects current conditions. So we're taking off the Upriver Drive again by a Vista. We would be adding Altamont and Main Avenue as existing arterials, which means they would get the stop signs that we typically put along an arterial street. And then we've got just a little error correction there where we had a hole on the map that needs to be filled in. So that's it. Are there any questions on the arterial map before we go into the railroad amendment? Okay, on the railroad, so in our current comp plan, we don't really have any language talking about the freight railroads. And we thought it would be good just to add a little section that talks about the, a few crossings of arterials that we have right now, where we did not have, they're not up to the ideal crossing improvements that we would want, typically gates is what we would want at an arterial railroad crossing. So we want to add that in there just to help when we're doing grant applications. It basically makes them a little more competitive if it's in our comp plan. So there's, this is what the language looks like. It's just adding a paragraph and then a table that identifies three project locations that we'd like to get done within the next 20 years. And I'll just go through those really quick with the next few images. So the first one is Havana Street, and this is oriented so that north is to your right here. We have a double track crossing that goes into the Union Pacific Yard, and we just don't have any gates on those crossings right now. They have flashers, but that's it. So with the increase in train building activity, we'd like to see gates there at some point. Next one. This is Freya, same track, but just a little farther down the street. This one always surprises me that it doesn't have gates because of the high volume on Freya, but the use of the track is still relatively low because it goes into the UP Yard. However, they are doing more, more train building and switching activity, and so we would like to get gates on this location at some point. And then the last one, Kevin, is Mission Avenue, and this is right by a Vista and also where the Centennial Trail makes its crossing of Mission Avenue. So if we were to install gates here, it would also serve to lock the sidewalk when the gates are down, just to keep people from crossing onto the tracks, well, you know, as they're going through on the Centennial Trail. And this is also kind of a spur track, but it does get maybe, I don't know, two trains a day, something like that, two to four. So it gets some activity and it's low speed, but we'd like to do it at some point. So that's it for the railroad amendments.
My apologies, sorry, just give me a second here, switching between. So just real quick, one addition, we didn't receive any public comments in either of Inga's proposals, and Plan Commission recommended approval of both. So that was the only, that was the only addition. Thank you, Inga, so much. And that is the whole suite of nine applications. I appreciate your patience through this whole long description. So we're happy to answer any questions you have. Otherwise, we'd like to go ahead and forward these ordinances to you for your consideration.
All right, last call for any questions. Probably not.
And I'll be the sponsor for that, Kevin.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember, I appreciate it.
Yep, yep.
Council President.
Yes, Councilmember Casker.
Quick question on Havana specifically. If we're putting this in our, and maybe this doesn't matter, but if we're putting it in our comp plan that we need to put some additional safety features there, is that, could that be construed as us kind of taking ownership for the entire width of Havana? And I'm thinking of.
Yeah, I don't know.
That street.
Let's, let's.
That's a good question, but I think that's something that would have to be worked out before we could agree to any improvement, that we've just worked something out with the county over the ownership right there. I mean, we do already maintain the traffic light at Sprague and Havana, and this is tied into that signal system as well.
Let's ask, Councilmember, could you maybe send an email to City Legal with that question? Because as you know, we have other issues with Havana. And so let's look at them all at the same time. All right, yeah, I just wanted to echo, great presentation, really compact and effective and helpful for us as decision makers, so thanks for that work. And I'm going to quickly dispatch you to your life because we have maybe a 15-minute presentation from Finance ongoing. Couple of us have a pretty hard stop at 12:30. We could probably go a couple minutes late to the Health Board meeting, but it's an important budget meeting for them as well. So Tanya Wallace, you have the talking stick.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Hopefully everybody can hear me okay when we bring this up. And we're going to go through this really rather quickly in the interest of time. I do want to respect your hard 12:30 cutoff time. And this is really the last of our presentations regarding the preliminary budget. As many of you are aware, on Monday, we will release the mayor's final proposed budget. So this will just kind of wrap up those last presentations, walking you through this preliminary budget. And really, we've got a couple infrastructure highlights to talk about. Utility rates are definitely part of the highlights. And we'll just move right into this. This is a slide that I show all the time about the preliminary budget being 901 million of current revenues. And you can see charges for service is 30%. It is the largest category of our revenue source, which primarily funds most of our infrastructure and utility services. The total budget, however, also comprises other resources, which are prior year excess revenues. And so fund balance and retained earnings make up about 9% of the preliminary budget for a total of $989 million, which equally offsets with $989 million worth of expenditures. And you will see, the largest expenditure category is in our infrastructure and utilities. A lot of folks don't realize that that is such a significant part of the city budget, but it really is. Excuse me, Council. So infrastructure services, so what are they? You can see the breakdown off onto your right, streets, water, sewer, solid waste. And then there's transfers. And these are transfers between these various funds, largely for administrative support and capital and debt. So you can see how this breaks down. It's a pretty diverse group, and a large of it is in our capital. And that should not be surprising at all. Some of the highlights, we have a few really big highlights focused in this area, and this is the combined sewer control facilities. There are 28, if my memory is holding correct, and they will all come online by the end of this year, the first quarter of 2021. And so there are additional position requests, and this is to support the inspection of those facilities that we now are maintaining. And then Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility. This is one of the, if not the, single largest capital investment that the city has had, investing more than $200 million into this new facility. So there is an increase in positions to help support the operations of this facility that are going to be phased in over 2021. So only part of the funding for all of those positions is really necessary for 2021, and then it'll be fully implemented in 2022. Also, you've heard a lot of discussion over the past month about rate increases for water and wastewater users, in addition to changing those rate structures just a little bit to help in not just recover cost, but also to send messages about consumption and conservation efforts for the city. Okay, see how quickly I can go right through this? So next steps, Monday is going to be a big day. We do release the mayor's proposed final budget to the city council. We will give a very brief overview at that time, and then we turn it over to you, council members, for deliberation and to proceed with the public hearing process. On November 9th, you will have your property tax ordinance submitted to you as well as CIP ordinance. Through November 16th to 23rd, you can continue that public hearing on the budget and take public testimony, right up until December 7th. Of course, Council, you can close the public hearing whenever you deem that that is an appropriate time to do so. November 30th is when we, the city, will certify our tax levies to the county.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Any questions, Council? And Scott Simmons is also on the line in case you have any further questions. He really does oversee much of that infrastructure improvement and has had many conversations with you regarding a lot of those highlights.
Yep, all right. I'm not seeing any questions or concerns. I know that you and your team have been working around the clock and will probably be doing so until Monday, so take care, all of you. And we've had, I don't know how much the public knows, but we've had some really good conversations between the council budget subcommittee and the administration, and we've narrowed a lot of our differences. We still have a ways to go to balance our revenues and expenses, but it's going well. So hats off to everybody. And that will bring us to the end of this meeting, but I do want to remind council members who are on the line that we do have a Community Assembly Executive Committee and City Council meeting tonight at 5:30 on WebX. It's been a while since we've met with them, so hope you all can join us. And obviously, it's not in person, so there's little excuse, except for some I already know about. So I hope everyone feels better, has a good week, and we'll see everyone on Monday at 1:15 for Public Safety Committee.